Roll call members, please.
District one, Darrell Jeter.
Here.
District two, Michelle Glover.
Here.
District three, Eddie Skeen.
Here.
District four, Michael Bricky.
Here.
District five, Danny Best Deal.
Here.
District six, Chris Manus.
Here.
At large, Stephanie Addington.
Here.
You all had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any deletions, additions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Onto the next item approved with minutes. You've all had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any deletions, additions, corrections? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of last month?
I'll leave that.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Right on to citizens' expression. I've got some rules to read to you for the citizens' expression. And due to a lot of people here, we're going to limit it to three minutes for you. That should be plenty for you to get your idea across. Rules for citizens' expression. Citizens' expression period is a point in the meeting when anyone who wishes to have progressed, the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one's signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizens' expression. We have three people on the -- that have signed up to speak this morning. First is Peggy Tice. Peggy?
Peggy Tice, Snowflake Rowley. Good morning. I missed last month, but I'm back. We're back. I want to talk about -- well, we feel guilty after all the devastation from elsewhere due to Helena. But rural roads and dirt roads in Scott County travel are bad, are bad. And they were bad before even the hurricane. So we're begging Mr. Terry Kilgore, when he goes to Richmond, to please get more money, a lot, for these 250 miles of dirt road in Scott County. And we thank VDOT and our neighbors for cleaning up after the hurricane. And Snowflake -- we on Snowflake Road call VDOT often for work orders because we don't want them to forget us. And to keep us on the six-year plan. And we wish that they would come up with another plan other than a six-year plan because it's just pitiful. And we pay personal property taxes on these vehicles that we have to run over, these dirt roads. And that's another issue. And then another issue that's mentioned to me quite often is this Riverside property. Is it bringing in revenue or is it money going out? And I want to thank you all for what all you all do for us. And have a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. Jim Cursow, Small Business Bureau.
Good morning, everyone. And I appreciate the opportunity to address Scott County residents about the disaster assistance that the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience is providing to Scott County residents, as well as a number of other counties here in Virginia, following the devastation from Hurricane Lee. We are in nine centers, six days a week. I know FEMA is going to be opening up one here in Duffield shortly. If they hadn't yesterday, we're going to have staff there where anybody can come in and talk to our customer service reps to see if we can help with our long-term, low-interest disaster loans. There's no fee to apply, there's no obligation to take the loan. We can help homeowners to the tune of half a million dollars for damage to their property. Contents of their home would be $100,000, as well as renters. So folks don't know that we also help homeowners and renters. And then for businesses, we offer two kinds of business loans, business physical damage, and that's up to $2 million. And then economic injury disaster loans, that's also $2 million. The deadline to apply currently is December 2nd for the physical damage loans, July 1st for the economic injury disaster loans. We're here getting information out around the county. We're working with a number of stakeholders, chambers, the media. And I myself am staying up in Bristol. We have folks working up. I'm working in all the counties, Washington East for myself, and we're getting the word out. We also offer mitigation coverage. We've got a whole package for folks, in addition to what FEMA provides grants, and then we provide the loans afterwards to make people whole. The terms of the loans are between 15, or either 15 or 30 years. And again, we just encourage people to come in and see if we can help you, hopefully before the deadline, as we understand now the deadline is December 2nd. Many times that gets extended, but again, we're always here at the request of the state, a request of the governor. If that were to come down and FEMA were to extend, we could be here longer as well. Any questions?
President of the board?
Appreciate you.
Okay, so please come see us. We'd be glad to help.
Thank you.
Next signed up on the agenda is Ms. Tammy Tiller, Commissioner Revenue.
Good morning. Good morning. A lot of crowds. Facebook, social media, and sure bring them out. Thanks, Danny.
You're welcome.
So in seven, in three minutes, I may go over. Commit a code of ethics. Virginia's type codes of ethics. Ethics is not intended to be inclusive. Number one, commit to the highest ideals of honesty, personal and professional integrity, fairness, and ethical values. Own respect, trust, and confidence of the public, elected and public officials and coworkers in providing professional services. Number three, become entrusted to stewards in financial management and the use of other public resources such as electronic communications and information systems, materials, and equipment and supplies. Number four, expose any violation of law, corruption, neglect of duty, neglect of duty, and misconduct or unethical behavior, and will not conduct or condone acts of fraud, theft, waste, abuse, or any such activities. Provide credible, honest, impartial, and objective information according to applicable laws, regulations, policies, and professional standards. Reflect nonpartisanship in professional work and conduct. Hold ourselves accountable for our own decisions and actions and to this code of ethics. I hear seven other things that we are to live up to as an elected official. And I know all of you all are here because of a lot of things that's been put on Facebook. I will ask you, when it comes to my office and what Tammy Tiller is aiming to do. You asked me. Do not believe everything you see on social media.
I didn't put it up there.
You didn't put it on there, but when somebody quotes word for word, almost exactly, she's well on her way to being one and done. That's what I said to you the other day.
I didn't hear you speak up.
I said to you, I may be on my way to one and done because I'm going to do my job that I was elected to do.
Just make it what I did hear.
Okay, good.
And I told you I'd do my job.
And you told me a few other things. So based on what I said to you, and you remember, I said I am not going to go in anybody's barn to get their big ass tractors. Do you remember me saying that?
Now, you said that you was not going to go on anybody's property.
I'm not going in anybody's barn to get their big ass tractors. It's exactly what I said. Get it right. Maybe you didn't hear me then.
I may be speaking loud enough to make you hear it a little louder.
Get it here, Nate. Here it is. You have slandered my name. I try to live up to this code of ethics. I'm not perfect, but I'm going to do my job while I'm here to do it, whether it's just 30 minutes, or whether it's four years, or whether it's on down the road. And when you threaten to campaign against me, it becomes political. Well, tell us about the taxes. Get to it. The taxes is, I'm on the agenda. I'm here to squash what you all are listening to. I will get to it. My three minutes are probably close to up, but before my three minutes are up, I do want an investigation for slander and defamation of my name. I can do that by myself. I can tarnish my own name. I don't need your help. But when it takes into my staff and it affects my office, no. You're not doing that, Danny. We are supposed to be leaders.
I didn't do it to you. You didn't do it to yourself, Ms. Tiller.
I want a full-blown investigation of ethics.
Okay, I'd like to -- Mr. Bricky, could I play a voicemail that you sent me yesterday?
And I am here on the agenda. It is pertaining to personal property, and I'm asking for ordinance. Get it right, Danny. An ordinance for what?
Can I play a voicemail that you sent me yesterday?
Your time's up, and we'll go on. And there'll be no questions from the audience. We have the police here, and you will be taken out if you disturb this meeting this time. Thank you, Ms. Tiller.
I have several cards with me. I have my phone number. And everybody is welcome to my office when this meeting is over, with everybody. Thank you.
State your name and where you're from, please.
Bobby Powers. I'm from Dungannon. Good morning, board. I've been thinking a lot on what I was going to say to you all this morning, but instead I want to address the public. I follow your requests at their budgets, their emails, texts, credit card statements. They charge me $40 an hour to do it. When Ms. Tiller came in this morning, she said not to believe everything I'm told and I'm spreading misinformation. It was on the county webpage about personal property taxes being raised. That's not what was posted. That's what I was posting. I want everybody to know that Frieda's income went, in five years, Frieda's income has went from $84,000 to $120,000 or $122,000, I'm not sure. The Commonwealth Office budget went from $385,000 to $1.5 million, but the state comp board pays that. Where does the state comp board get their money? State taxes. Frieda bought the Daisy Compton building for the Commonwealth Office, and it was too small. It's sitting empty. They stay at the Gaylord and the Omni Hotels that charge almost $500 a night. The Gaylord has a swim park inside of it. They are paying for $500 dinners at the tobacco company, and if they want to tax the working man's equipment, that's a slap in the face and a punch below the belt. Every time I sit on my side, every time I sit on my side-by-side or load my trailer with hay, I have to thank the board for the privilege to use it. There's nothing can be done because I tried to take them to court over this 9:00 AM meeting stuff and the meetings they have over their emails. But I got a judge that was in Kilgore's back pocket, and I'm going to tell you, reading all her emails, the only one up there on the boards that's working for us is Danny and Eddie. You can believe what you want to. But if she wants an ordinance, an ordinance, you can Google it right now, pull out your phone. What is an ordinance? It's a law. She wants another law. Tell us about the law that you want to impose, the taxes that you want to impose. Don't get up here spilling hate towards Danny. We don't give a shit about your beef with Danny. We want to know what it's going to cost us to use our backhoes, our skid steers, our utility trailers. We don't care about that.
Amen.
Next election, there's nothing we can do because this is Kilgore County, y'all. I've done tried. They're in their back pocket. But come next election, y'all can vote the ones that vote for this tax or this ordinance. You can vote them out. The only two up there who worked their salt is Danny and Eddie. And anyone in here that wants my name and number, you let me know. I'll give you my name and number.
One quick note. Could y'all watch your language when you're getting up here? I know we get heated and we say words, but my little girls at home watch this sometimes, so I'd just like to keep the language down if we can.
Ms. Tiller got down to my basement a minute ago and told me I was spreading misinformation. And she don't know how dangerous that was. I'm in public and the cameras wasn't on, and she don't need to be putting herself out there in the public eye like that. I behave myself, but she needs to watch her boundary.
I understand, Ms. Tiller. I'm just saying, everybody can speak their mind. I'm just asking you to clean up your language, please.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak for three minutes?
Yes, I would. Before I start my three minutes, may I give this to someone to hand some things out to you? I think there's eight or nine. Well, good morning. I'm Ron Jenkins, and I work for the Virginia Loggers Association. And my role, I'm from Goochlin County, Virginia, by the way. My role is to support logging businesses in our forest products industry. That is why they hired me. I've been in this role for about 10 years. And I'd like to thank the person that gave the prayer. That's referring to a song is exactly why I'm here, to help with the facts and to tell you the why. And I want you to know that I've worked with, had the privilege of working with loggers for these last 10 years, and I've gotten to know them very well, professionally and personally. And there's some things you may or may not know. The logging industry, the loggers, first of all, are the backbone to Virginia's third largest industry. You can see that in the studies that the state puts out. Number one, ag and forestry together, but when you break them out, it's the third, without loggers, nothing would happen. Nothing at all would happen. Your basic essential products that we have, just like food, would not be available to you. But what these folks do is incredible, and guess what? And across the Commonwealth of Virginia, there's only about 1,000 of them total. And there are a lot that are going out of business almost daily. And there are lots of reasons for that. I'll tell you some. Why am I here? I would like to ask you, humbly ask, that you rule in favor of the logging businesses that are here and exempt personal property or tools and machinery taxes, whichever you're charging them, on their off-road equipment. That's skitters, loaders, anything that's used in the harvesting. It does not, we're not asking for the trailers or the tractor and trailer, tractor, the trucks. In other words, the licensed equipment is not what's in here. Okay? But let me tell you some of the things that these folks do. Just to start a business these days, if you were to buy new equipment, you're looking at a million dollars or more easily, just for a tiny, tiny crew, just to make a living and get by. It's still one of the most dangerous jobs in the, in the voucher category. You can look that up. It still ranks high. Yet they still come to work every day, and they love what they do. But that's not all. They make this investment, and then guess what? They would like to produce at the maximum production they can, but that doesn't always work in this business that they have chosen to live in and be in. Because there are daily quotas on their deliveries to meals, every day. I'm hearing all the time, well, I could only deliver this many loads. I could only deliver, oh, they dropped my number. And yet, they could have produced a lot more. So this is subject, they are subject to all the time. How about markets? Lumber? We know the housing is down. It hasn't, the demand is low. Wood, does that mean three minutes is up?
That's three minutes.
Sorry?
That is three minutes. Would you like to close? Can you close?
I can close, but let me say this, and thank you for that. This is, there are so many things working against our logging businesses, and yet, they still stay in it. And what they like to do, they're small family-owned businesses, they want to pass on that business to their children, if they're, to keep their children near, dear to them in this business. And this is something we need to think about if we are going to have a logging business in the future. So to get to kind of the bottom line, you know, we created the law. We didn't create it, but we had a bill passed to help us get the law that then would allow you, as the board supervisors, the ability to adopt a tax code, just like farmers have had for a long time. I think logging was just left out, if you know, if you want to know the truth. That's what I think. And I would just close with a few more things. What's going to happen if we don't do this in the counties that have chosen not to? Well, loggers can move. It's going to affect the landowners if the loggers have to go out of business or move away. The landowners then say, you know, they have no good harvesters nearby that they can harvest and harvest their trees. It is a very important part of forest management. The trees get less healthy, more subject to insects, diseases, and fire. And there's lots of things that go into just a business. If they're not willing or can't invest in their business to grow, they can't hire people in the future. They're not going to be able to stay in business. So the reasons I hear most of why we don't want to do this is money. Where would I get the money to replace it? And number two, oh, this is special. It's special. Those people, why would we want to give them a special exemption? And there are great reasons why counties have already chosen to say, look, those are not good enough, strong enough reasons. We'll find the monies. There are lots of ways to do that. You all are the experts in that. And as far as special, it is as special, this field and forest products, what they do, as it is for the farmer to produce the food that comes to you, is exactly that. And yet, they have all these challenges. So I would just suggest that the reasons to adopt outweigh the no's. So look at their investment in the future. If you say, I'm going to take this little bit of money now, and I'm going to let them be exempted, think about what they can do then with the money that they have to invest for their future as they grow jobs, as they build and buy more equipment, as they do things in the community. It's going to come back in the, in the long run. And if you want to just find someone who's in your position that really understands this issue, look in your packet, there's a guy named James Jewett in Madison County. He was on the board supervisors. He wrote a beautiful testimonial. When I first met him at the first meeting, he said, I think we should not do this. And 30 days later, after doing some work and working with loggers and knowing, getting to know them, he changed his mind, and it was a unanimous decision, one of our best successes. I hope that you will come to that decision yourself and say, yes, we need to treat our logging business professionally. Let's, let's give them this exemption and help grow their business. Thank you.
Before you leave, could I, could I make a statement? And I stand to be corrected by our county administrator or attorney or Tammy, or Commissioner Revenue. Any ordinance that we passed today would be to exempt loggers, logging. It is not an ordinance to tax. It's an ordinance, right now, they can be taxed, correct? Tammy? If we pass an ordinance, it will, that you can't be taxed.
Right.
You'll be exempted if we pass an ordinance.
I don't have to worry. Those items would be exempted to where I'm not calling up a logger or sending the 762s like I did before, and, and we can just continue on. We do have only one logger that's complied in the county throughout the years with a 762.
We would, we would.
That I'm aware of. That's all I've found so far.
We would have to have a public hearing, and it wouldn't be until December, but if we pass an ordinance today, it is to exempt loggers, and we'll consider farming and trailers at the same, in separate.
May I speak?
I think everyone here understands that. But I don't believe the public understands it.
The logging would be coming under machinery and tools, whereas I'm on the agenda for personal property, and the farmer would be machinery, equipment as well. Two different categories in the taxation part of it, but exempt regardless.
I just want you to understand that an ordinance is to exempt them, not to tax them.
Yes, may I respond?
Sure.
All right, so in your packet, there's the Code of Virginia. We actually worked on this law. It took us two years. This wasn't just an overnight. We had to get someone that was ready and felt comfortable presenting a bill to the General Assembly to actually add this little section 14 in the, in the code section that's in your packet. And what that does is list civil cultural or logging forestry, and that's what it was. It wasn't in there until this was approved in 2020. So what, and I've seen counties do, the kind of, and I have lots of drafts, by the way, I'm happy to share with anyone, of county ordinances that have done with counties, just up the road is one of the first ones we got. So you simply announced today, or agreed unanimously, or at least majority, that you will hold a public hearing next meeting and give 30 days, I believe, and if you have a county attorney here, he'll check me out on all that. And then take your comments at the next meeting, a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Much like you have on your agenda. And then you can vote if it looks favorable or not. You vote on whether or not to adopt a new tax ordinance in your county on your books that matches up with the state code.
Yes.
And exempt the loggers.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak for?
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name's Jeremy Har. I farm in the Nicholsville community. I practice law in Kingsport. I live in Kingsport, but I do farming across southwest Virginia. I would like to just point out that practicing law for nearly 20 years, you have to be careful about what definitions are. The gentleman that came up here and spoke about exempting loggers pointed out that there's only 1,000 loggers in the entire state of Virginia. So there's only a handful of loggers that live or log in Scott County. The problem with these definitions of taxes on personal property versus business property is there's a lot of folks in Scott County that maybe have trailers, that have tools, machinery, that cut some timber, that do things on a part-time basis, that cut their own firewood, that mow yards, that perform a lot of other business activities. So when we are crafting any ordinance, the devil's in the details. And the details are always definitions. What is a logger? What is a person engaged in business? If I sell a little firewood, am I engaged in business? If I have a lawn service, am I engaged in business? What if I have that lawn trailer just to go cut my grandmother's yard? Is that going to be taxed? The citizens just need to know exactly what they're going to be taxed on and how they're going to be taxed, because this audience, a lot of folks called me, and I never come to these meetings. And I flew back in yesterday to be able to be here. A lot of folks reach out to me individually with questions, and I said those questions need to be directed to the board. They want to know, are they going to be taxed on a particular item? And if so, how much and when and how often? So the reason that this audience is here, and I speak for a lot of them, and I speak for a lot of people that couldn't be here, is they just want an explanation of what's going on. This county absolutely desperately needs money. This county needs revenue. This county needs jobs. This county needs a lot of support. And I've done everything in my power to try to do things for this county to bring in revenue. But we just need a clear definition so that the common folks that's sitting out here can understand and be able to plan what type of tax that they're going to have to swallow next year, and when they're going to have to pay it, and how much. And how do you evaluate the value of a lot of different things? Now, I'm not talking about just a farmer. I'm talking about just the average person who's working, that has items, personal property items, how those get valued, where they exist. There's just a lot of questions.
Yes, sir. If you could sum up, please.
Yes. We just need some clear understanding, and if everybody could put something together so that everybody would be educated on what's going on, I believe the general public would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Bill Heck. I live in Danville, Virginia. You know, the Bible is putting heavy burdens on people, on people that works for a living. And right now, Scott County does not want jobs. Why can't y'all get jobs here to pay, to help? I got a daughter drives to Johnson City, has to go everywhere to get a job. Tell me, where's jobs in Scott County? Where are they? Y'all are killing jobs, trying to bring stuff in. And if you don't do so, this county takes power on water. That's where y'all make your money, on water, put sewer in, and that's all. What jobs do y'all have? Tell me. Where's the majors? Where? Where's the jobs? Thank you.
Morning. My name's Roger Steadman. I live in the Patonsville area, and I just have a couple of questions. Does the county have the money to pay for this new addition that's being built at the courthouse? That $10 million addition? Do we have it? If we don't, we either go away and raise property taxes or tax the farmer. And one other question. If y'all don't want to vote on it, because you know that'd be political suicide, can you put it in a county vote and let all the citizens vote against it? Can you do it that way? You know what I'm saying? Put it on a ballot? If you can, then we'll see who gets the short end of the straw, whether it's the farmers or the citizens. Y'all going to pay for it, who are you? It's county.
Pete Savatino, 901 Anther Springs Lane, Fort Blackmore. Guess I have a few questions. Here, I guess, some questions to you. This personal property tax, you're going to raise our personal property taxes with something, with an amendment on here that says that you're going to have some kind of personal property tax that we're going to have to pay for?
No.
No, no, so why is it on here? Why do we have something that you're going to have amended, amended our personal property tax?
I'm not coming for that. I'm coming for an ordinance to exempt.
So you're saying that you're not going to come after raising our personal property taxes or anything like that? I'm trying to figure out what's going on here. Because I'm disabled. I have a tiny farm, and I need to know what I'm going to be taxed on, if I'm going to be taxed on anything.
I have no intent to come after your farm equipment or your farm.
I guess my second question would be, is your company after our personal, how are you coming after us for more money?
No, I'm not. I'm asking for an ordinance today to exempt pull behind trailers and RV campers. Wait, that's it?
To?
Exempt.
Well, everybody in here, everybody in here is thinking that you're coming after to try to raise personal property taxes. So I guess my question is, if we don't have the money and you're raising personal property taxes, why aren't we looking in within Scott County and finding the money instead of coming in our pockets, in our pocketbooks?
That's not what we're doing. Because I'll tell you again what I said about ago. And any ordinance that's passed today will be to exempt you from taxes. It will not be to tax you. As it stands right now in Scott County, everything is open to be taxed. Any ordinance that we pass today.
There won't be an ordinance passed today.
No, it won't be passed today.
You have to have a public hearing next month to adopt an ordinance.
Okay, well, maybe I'm not too informed about it and all that, I guess, because I don't understand what you're after as far as people getting money and stuff. Is there not enough money here? Is there ways that we can look inside, somebody at the county can balance the budget a little better? I mean, there's lots of things that I see that we can do differently in the county, but it doesn't seem like anybody's looking at that. You got that building over on Riverside Drive. You're asked, you're going to have the money to put the addition on over at the courthouse. Anybody could, they could consolidate and all that. We pay for the gas over there, pay for the electric over there, pay for the lawn care over there, and it's an empty building. How many other ones do we have in Scott County in our empty buildings that we're paying all that stuff on? Is there, does anybody have any idea on that? You've got a lot of smaller buildings. If you can't sell it because it's too expensive with the economy and stuff that's going on, nobody wants to buy it, why not consolidate some of our other populations that are smaller and sell them? And then, like, there's, I got other things. There's like, all kinds of things that we can do in the county to save money. Does anybody in the county that sits on the board or any of the county employees have personal, have county vehicles? Does anybody drive a county vehicle? Home to, from work? If they do, why don't they drive their personal cars to and from work? Let them pay for the gas. Let them pay for their insurance, oil changes, tires, and maintenance. We shouldn't have to pay for that. You don't pay for my gas. And then when it comes to our roads, I heard a couple people saying, we were out power nine days. Get it? I know it's a problem because of the storm, no problem. There's four families that were there. There was eight of us. Two and a half days. My truck, my trailer, my tractors, our fuel, all that kind of stuff, we took care of it. Who do I submit the $10,000 bill for clearing the road? And then they didn't come out for weeks after that. We did all that. We were trying to get our roads fixed. They came out, we came here when, I guess the last time you had a meeting in the, the Virginia DOT, said, oh, yeah, we'll come out. And hate to say it, but that guy was full of crap. He told me, called me up, he says, I'll call you the next day. Says, you have any questions, you have any problems, you call me directly. I said, okay. He called me the next day. I said, let me see how, you know, straight-up guy this was. I waited 10 minutes after I talked to the man, called him, left a message. To this day, he hasn't returned my message. They came out, they filled the hole, three quarters of a mile worth of road, passed to my house and past my house. I fixed it, my dime, my dollar. After the storm, the four families that we have here, we cut it all up so we could get out. They don't show up for another couple of weeks, which I get, I understand that, but we did it. And it seems like nobody up here can, or somebody's up here should be able to say, hey, you guys got to start doing your job. You can't forget about these families that are up the hill. And it's, you know, it's just sad.
Sir, I'm sorry for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Skeen, have you had any communications with V-Dot or Garden, any of that?
This is taking, or, why don't you know I have?
Could I speak up, Mr. Man? I have called V-Dot on Anther Springs Road over.
Sorry?
I said, I have called V-Dot, and I think you've got a neighbor of mine, I think.
I can say, I can give you a list of all the work orders I got, and they don't come up.
And I sent them in, and they ain't done anything.
They don't do nothing.
And I know that you're telling the truth.
I mean, I actually, I actually moved my fence on my farm because they wouldn't help out putting a turnaround in for the school bus.
Right.
I, I, I tried to do what I got to do.
I found out where it was at when you spoke several months ago.
Yeah, and then they fixed the hole, and they forgot the rest of the, the rest of the road. Where my house? I told you, stones out of my driveway to fix our road.
But I have called V-Dot, and I've got the same response as you have. I want you to know that I am one on this board, that I have made several calls on that road about.
Was there anything that we can do? Because I was told, and we were on that six-year list.
Yeah, we've been told that for about 30 years.
Well, that's what's happened. You stay on the six-year list.
Well, now, they'll come up that road, and what they do, they go to sleep, you hit that level, it'll scrape for about 10, 15 foot, and they wake up, they raise it up, and they go on.
Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to just say a few words. I'm going to limit my comments to the state of the forest products industry. My name is Reed Raloff. I've been working in Scott County since December of 96. I was the timber operations manager for Gilbert NS Lumber in Duffield, Virginia, from 96 through 2007, and I hold the same position for Unaka Forest Products, we're also located in Duffield, Virginia, since 2007. But just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at nationwide, the last 10 or 15 years, we've produced about 15 to 20 billion board feet of hardwood timber. Last year, we were just over five. It's a depressed industry for several factors. None of that, oh, that's not related to anything going on today, but it is related to the loggers in Scott County specifically. When we started in 96, we purchased over 20 million board feet per year. I don't know if we did five last year. And there's not a single major hardwood producer in Scott County currently. Just to kind of give you an idea of the market, five years ago, we were able to pay $30 a ton for pulpwood. We opened back up this week in Duffield at a whopping $22 per ton, just the nature of the market. So my concern is, any additional cost to the loggers may be the straw that breaks the camel's back. So on behalf of the forest industry, I'm just pleased, if you can, this exemption needs to happen for them and for the future of the forest products industry, not only in Scott County, but nationwide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public expression?
My name's Chuck Gardner. I'm, I'm a small-time farmer. I know most of these people in here are good people. And what we have is a trust issue between the county and you all. Ever since that I have been of working age, able to read and research on my own, this is the problem, is things like this, misinformation. You all don't inform the county of anything that is going on until we have to have one of these meetings, and everybody's riled up about it. It's, it is disgusting to know that we have people that I know on this board that can't get out and talk to the people that put them in the seat you're in now. How, how is the county supposed to trust anything you all say? I can't get my taxes right for the last seven years. Last year, my taxes was on somebody else's, went to somebody else's house, and I got a phone call. So how can I trust anything, offense, anything that the tax people want to do, or anything you all want to do up here? I don't believe it. You all put something in the books, and there it is. You exempt it today, five years down the road, when people's making a little more money, if we do, what's going to happen? We'll have the same meeting again, and there'll be taxes put on this stuff. I think it's ridiculous that we all have to come in here and beg and try to barter with you all about how poor the county is doing, and all everybody wants to do is get the small people. I think it's ridiculous.
Good morning. My name's John Wade, from Duffield, Virginia, owner of Timberline Logging Incorporated, and I'm also a farmer. I've been in business, Timberline has been in business for 35 years, and God has blessed me and my men. And this tax, I've never had to pay a tax on my logging equipment. I have on my trucks, obviously. But just like Mr. Ratliff said there a while ago, the logging industry, at this point in time, in my 35 years, I've never seen it this bad, even in 2008, never have I seen it this bad. And I've been in business 35 years, and I'm struggling. And I guarantee you, I'm not the only one struggling. So any tax, any more money that we have to spend, other than what we're already spending, is going to be detrimental. Now, I'm also here for my employees, because they work, obviously, for Timberline Logging. I'm not tooting my own horn, but we have probably for the last 20 years supplied health insurance to our employees 100%. And I've been able to do that because we have good employees, and I've gave them that incentive to work harder so that we can provide health insurance. But I can't pay anything else. I can't do it. And if you do it on logging equipment and farm equipment, there's just no way I can provide health insurance. And, and logging is an industry that is tough, and everybody in here would tell you the same thing. You might go out to work this morning, the weather may hold you up, or you may have a piece of equipment that'll break down, that costs, and that's another thing, in the last four years, I'm not going to get on the political side of it, but the last four years has been detrimental to my company. Everything has gone up. But what's not gone up is what we receive for our product. So how can we keep paying for everything? We can't do it. There's no way we can do it. And I am in the process of maybe, and I'm not saying this to sway you anyway, but to step down, to step out of it. I'll say, me 63 years old, it's been good to me, and like I say, I've been blessed, God's blessed me, and he's took care of me as far as health-wise, you know? I've had a, and I guarantee you, everyone in here that's done it, even farmers, has been that close, that close to death, and I have. And, and it's, like I say, it's a tough job. But we appreciate the things that you do for us. I'm not going to stand up here and knock anybody, but we need your help on this issue, on taxing on logging equipment and farm equipment and trailers and whatever. We already pay a lot of taxes. And everybody thinks, oh, you know, because you've got a piece of land or a house or something, that you're really doing well. Well, I can tell you, it ain't always what it looks like. And you all are the same way. I mean, it's tough. Things are tough, tougher now than it's ever been in my industry. But I thank you for your time.
My name's David Sandish, and in the logging business since 1980. In 1980, I got more for my pulpwood, paperwoods, ragwood than I do now. That's how much the industry has failed us. I also have a copy of Virginia Tax Law that states that suppliers of pulpwood, veneer logs, mine props, and railroad ties, is what we generally do, is to be considered intangible personal property and shall not be taxed. And I'd like to hand it out to each of you all that has not seen what Virginia Tax Law states. With that being said, the industry has got to. The article in the paper, upon talking with Tammy Taylor, states that other counties are imposing taxes on loggers, and that is not true. Danny Cornet, one of the biggest loggers, and I think he's in Dickinson County now. I give him the same paper I give you all, and they have denied taxing him, along with the other loggers in that county. There's also other laws, taxation laws, that states specifically for the logging industry and the machinery used in the logging industry to be sent. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Brandon Woods, East Cars Valley. Instead of worrying about taxing us farmers, the small people, and the loggers, the best I can tell, in 2023, there was 23,769 residents in Scott County, I'm sorry, 2013. 2024, there's 21,386. There's all your money. Worried about taxing a hard-working man trying to provide, and everybody's leaving, going to Tennessee, or ever not pay taxes? If y'all were worried about getting people back in Scott County, get the, get the population back up, the tax is not going to back down a little bit. That's just my two cents worth. But I mean, and plus, in East Cars Valley, all the Tennessee residents live on the Virginia side, I don't know who is responsible for the, keeping up the tags and stuff in Scott County. I understand, but I mean, we need to talk to maybe Sheriff Feeds or... I understand, but I mean, we need to talk to maybe Sheriff Feeds or High Sheriff or whoever about enforcing some laws that we all got to pay, that they need to pay too. Earn your personal property tax, earn your state income tax, they all got Tennessee addresses, they ain't paying no taxes. They probably renting a house, that's all you're getting. But you're losing property on vehicles and income. Thank you.
Anyone else for public expression?
I'm John Gibson with Gibson Lobby. I've lived in the county now since 2013. And we just buy by the roofs, we're trying to live that way. I guess the only beef I really got to date is we pile soup from where we lived in Kentucky. We paid property tax and on our business center, personal. When we moved here, we just piled soup, thought we was doing the right thing, but apparently...
Apparently, the only ones was paying it, logging tax. And we've paid to date now $43,189.34, and then we paid this year that we got billed, $7,679.09, which is they all get a $50,848.43. And I'm Jenny Gibson, the other owner of Gibson Lobby. And, you know, we've had to set our equipment up and pay extra to get it set up and higher interest and everything else because we didn't have the money. We've almost shut our business down three times because we about couldn't afford to make it, and this makes it even harder.
Still...
I would like to say on your behalf, I didn't call you back when you called.
Yeah, I called you.
Yes, you did. I have calculated, and if this exemption goes through, if you don't pay this year's already, I know you have, I will look it up, I am going to request what I can by the code of the state of Virginia, $14,356.50. By the code of the state of Virginia, I can do current and three previous. I wish I could do it all. Obviously, you are my one person that has complied.
We had already made up our mind. We're probably going to go talk to a lawyer about that.
That's fine. I have to go by code.
And that's fine, and I wish you the best on that. Because I do have to go by code.
We can show you on this right here. It started out at a pretty reasonable price.
A pretty simple price.
Was treacherous.
Since 2020, it kept on at $2,500, and you know that?
Yes.
Per year.
And I wouldn't have even spoken about you. I didn't know you to talk to you today, but I did have your figures that I could do if this goes through.
We paid $8,900 last year, and it was horrible. So, just so y'all know.
Hopefully, you get the permission given to you.
Back to what John was talking, we provide insurance, try to do the right thing.
100%.
I mean, I'm a God-Christ guy, for one.
We're Christians number one, and we was doing what we thought was the honest thing to do. Little did we know, it was the only one. It's messed up, and we should have been informed that we were going to, by your office. That's not right. That's not right.
Thank you.
Bye.
I've been up, could I just ask Tammy one question in front of everybody so they can kind of get, if she gets... For my taxes, well, on my land, there's a state road that goes through it, 700 feet long that I own, it's 12 feet wide. It was given to them probably in 1948 when they put the road in. Well, my family and me are still paying taxes on that piece of land. Y'all not took it off the taxes. The state didn't take it off the taxes. So if I pay taxes on that loan, it really don't belong to the state, does it? It still belongs to me.
If there's a deed actually to the state, it belongs to them, I'll have to look at your deed.
Oh, back then, they didn't do that. They didn't do it where they just backed up the road. They come by and said, can we move up here? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have to go by what is in the court records. If there was a deed recorded, I could go back to current and three previous and make that correction.
No, you don't have to. I'm going to put a gate up just towards the pole because it's mine. I'll mow weed and stuff, mow the grass.
If it's not in a deed to the state, it is yours.
All right.
That's my opinion. I'm not legal, but that would be my opinion.
That's all I need to know. So if any gal comes through to jail...
Anyone else for public expression?
I guess most of you know me. I'm Jeff Watson, I'm from Fort Blackmore. My daddy was in business, construction business. My brother was in the store business. I worked for VDOT and I had to go and visit a building. Now, did I want to go and visit a building? There's no way. But I had no choice but I could go and do my job. And this personal property tax deal is ridiculous. I've got a brother-in-law that has a produce market that's just starting business about three years ago, Penny. Are you all not for the small businesses in Scott County? I'm nobody.
I am.
Always.
Are we not?
Of course.
Let's see, let's see the hands that's for the small business. What's that carry? But they want to come in and tax the cash register. The scales that you put the produce on, the freezers that you keep the meat and stuff in that you have to pay. Not only that, right now, produce business is slow. The grows is done for killing. They got new kilted builds to sell that's on consignment, but she wants to go and wants to tax every one of them buildings that's on her property down there. That ain't right. That business just started. You want them to go out of business? Well, keep doing what you're doing and they'll be out.
Anyone else?
My name is Thomas Hall. I'm out of Stanley Town, Virginia, over next to Deadfield. I went down to Ms. Taylor's office. I have an old house that's standing over on my property. The floor is in the basement. The roof is almost ready to come off of it. When we done this last tax assessment, we went through three different boards. Two of them took it off, and the last one I didn't get to go to, they put it back up. You can't live in it, and it'll cost you $20,000 or $30,000, the best you could do to put a floor back in and a roof on it. It's made of block, it's got a basement under it, but it's a dirt floor basement. So that's really what's rotted the floor out of it. I went down to have her to take it off my taxes. She says she can't take it off. Okay, so I went out and cut it, out to her own downloom road, to see if they want to put a floor back in. I don't care a bit to pay the taxes if somebody put a floor and roof back on, but when you got something standing here, and it's no camp, and I really ain't got the equipment or nothing like that to knock it down with, and it can't burn it because it's right against the woods, so I've ended up setting the woods on fire. But you pay for something that's no camp. So they need to be something somewhere to where, let's just say, if she can't take it off now, what happens if you've got a good house, but your house burns down? Are you going to pay taxes on it for five or six more years till the assessment comes around when your house burns down? It don't really make sense, which is not that high on the tax on it, but if it's no camp, it's no camp. Because over there, all over there right now, is bushes and rattlesnakes, because I killed seven. Well, put like this, I saved my life by removing seven. Don't like to do anything well. I'd like for somebody to see what they can do about that. Thank you.
Aaron Steadman, Nicholsville. I just got a question and a request. I want to know what we're doing to develop the Riverside property. There's no for lease sign, it's not on internet for a lease, nobody knows it's there, so... And then the request is I'd like to post the utilities, what we spent on it last year and this year for the citizens, just so they know how much it's bleeding. Thank you.
Sir, I didn't catch your name, I just got up first.
Aaron Steadman. I'm a citizen, I'm in Smallville.
I've asked about maybe trying to get an urgent here and there, because this county is, to the best of my knowledge, is the only county in the state that don't have a hospital.
We don't have any.
But I've asked maybe to try to get an urgent here and there.
I buy all my supplies on state. I'm a small business. I work down there.
I just wanted to... I just wanted to tell you I have mentioned that, okay? And thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak in public expression?
Chris, you was talking about these people that cut dirty mouths.
Yes, sir.
Well, you all, they need to clean up their dirty mouths. Y'all need to clean up the county. And Mr. Briggs, as far as you're cutting these people off in 30 minutes, 30 minutes, that's just like John Wade and all these other loggers, 3 minutes, their lives, they put their life into this. It's a whole lot more than 3 minutes, before it's a lot more than 3 minutes. You need to give them more time. You all getting set up for a fight to do nothing. And these loggers, and these farmers, they're doing our business. You're in my head.
If you want to speak, come up to the podium. If not, we've got two people over here that can escort you out, sir.
I'll rest their water walk. That's a three right there. That's a three.
Does anyone else have anything to say at the podium?
You know, I was going, I'm Gary Baker from Booty Creek. I was going to say Jack today, but, you know, Tammy's got a heck of a hard job, and I think the girl is doing the best she can do, and I know Richard Chapman, back in the old days, I think it was the last of the 60, Sally might know, but I know them supervisors, he's got, he got them to take off all the farming equipment. Because back in them days, if you all remember, I believe that some of you might be old enough like me, but Dad, I remember Dad used to help the county's chickens, the horses, the cows, all these jewelry, the gold, everything, everything on the farm, they taxed. Richard went before the board of supervisors, and I thought Jack Staller and them boys put in a resolution that killed it all, that it could never be brought up again. But now you, I may be wrong, but Tammy's doing, she's got a heck of a hard job, and I believe the girl is going to try to do the best she can do, and I believe you all need to put in an exemption to get rid of it. And I don't think I, you know, after thinking about all of this, after talking to the Gibson lady back there, I think I would have Debbie send out 762s because red wine jumped on my butt, that I wouldn't be taxing everybody. And I told Debbie to send out all the 762s to the businesses in the county. And you know, I might have been wrong on the loggers, but I wouldn't wrong on the farmers because they supposed to been tuck all hermen. That's the way Jack Staller had it back in the old days. So I think you ought to place that exemption today, maybe not on the trailers, I don't know. I ain't getting involved in that. But now, farmers need to be killed right on the spot, and logging equipment, I think so too. Y'all need to put it in here, that this mess can't be brought up again. Now, that's my opinion. Thank you for... Oh, I did get to talk to Farm Bureau in Richmond about VDOT. And I think they going to try to help us get more employees, get more equipment, and open up these new, hopefully, these new offices like we had back in the old days, when we can take care of the county. Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it. But Tammy, don't make my joke, Doc. She's got a heck of a hard job here.
Anyone else?
May I speak as a citizen? I know I spoke...
I think we've got somebody else coming up, mate.
Trish Gibson, 484, Alley Valley Sanction. I've got two different things I'd like to say. A room at 796 Atler Springs. Back in June, our neighbor spoke and got a cobra or a tile approved. We've still yet to get that. They brought a red cone and set it there. I have a grandchild riding that bus. That cobra is very dangerous, and I stayed scared to death right this morning. The bus is going to fall through that, somebody's going to have to pay. I mean, this is ridiculous, and from his, from my driveway to his house is no maintenance. The next state road goes all the way up there. He had to sacrifice part of his farm, like he said, for the school bus to turn for my daughter to ride, or I would have to drive her to school every day. It's just not right. I mean, when we had the storm, my husband, his brothers, and Pete cleared the roads for us to get out because we have elderly, he's a cancer patient that had to go. That's fine, we didn't care to do that, we needed out. Well, when VDOT came over, they were from Richmond, they worked 30 minutes and were leaving. I stopped them and I asked them, I said, are you guys leaving? He said, yes. He gave me a number to call above what I had been calling. Well, I got the rope, the, the trees cleaned up, they did come out of that, but in the meantime, I got jumped on and talked very badly from Fort Blackmore, VDOT, because I went above their head. Well, when you've got tons of work orders and nothing's getting done, then you have to do something. And as a business owner, we was in Tennessee as a business owner, we moved to Virginia, in Scott County, home base, to have revenue in the county. Recently retired, trying to go and enjoy some retirement and enjoy our farm, and I'm afraid we aren't going to get our stuff taxed. When you live on a fixed income after retirement, you can't pay more taxes on a tractor or bush hog or whatever you've got. It's just not right. And my other question is, why can you not pass the ordinance today while the people's here? Because if you, my opinion is, if you wait till next meeting, there's going to be more rumors, more social media, to bring more disgrace to Scott County.
David and Alie spoke two, three times. I've said, you know, today, but evidently, Miss Keg, we have, it'd be December, correct?
We have to advertise ordinance twice in the county paper and put that notice out there for an ordinance, so, and have a public hearing on it, so it has to be next month.
But we will vote today, we will vote today on the ordinance, correct?
No.
We will not. We will not.
Just tell everyone. You can indicate what you want in the ordinance.
We can create it today.
Create it today.
But then it has to be.
Be in the paper.
Ran in the paper, and then it has to be, that's when we'll approve it, approve the ordinance will be in December.
I mean, I don't care to tell you myself personally, I would vote yes right now.
Me too.
Thank you.
Amen.
I think it's great, and that's across the board to exempt farms.
So once it's in the ordinance, it's accepted and it's passed and it's law.
That's what we're trying to do.
Are they gonna be counted back up in a few years that we have to go?
No.
Not on this one.
That's what we're trying to do today is to get this started.
Yes.
We're not trying to tax, we're trying to take the tax away.
We've all been taxed enough. It is, it's enough. And we don't need to tax anymore the taxpayers of Scott County. It's gotta stop. So, you know, creating this ordinance and then letting everybody come and express their opinions and everything, that's gonna help us to push this along faster. So hopefully in December it'll be pushed and we don't have to worry about it anymore. But as for myself, absolutely not. I don't want to tax any farmer out there.
No.
Absolutely not. Logging, absolutely not. Business owners, absolutely not.
What about the people of Scott County? That's who you're gonna stick it to, though. Property taxes, you gonna pay it one way or the other, y'all gonna pay it.
Ms. Gibson, I didn't speak to you earlier, I think I gave you my card. If you call me about your roads, I'll be glad to help.
What I'm saying right now, if it wasn't for the, my husband, his brother, and Pete maintaining that road, we couldn't get in there. And when I talked to them, and not to call any names out, but like I said, I got talked to very rudely, actually cursed at Fort Blackmore because that I went above him. But when they look at how many work orders it's been in there, and I mean, that's a state road, and the school bus runs it, it should be maintained, and it shouldn't be up to the citizens that live in there to maintain it. So, I mean, it's just, the way I see it, we shouldn't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I got a question. Who, my name's Pete Savett, you know, Fort Blackmore. Who, who's putting us out for this ordinance? Is it you guys?
It shows up on Facebook. Any other?
No, I mean, who, who is, who is behind putting this out as we have to come in and say we don't want this? Who is it? You guys that put this out, that's not doing that? Well, who is it? Don't you think we should know who did this? If you guys are gonna point some charge here, we come to you for answers and questions. You can't tell me who put this out that we're here?
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was here last Friday in another office. And this come about, the logging equipment, the farming equipment, and trailers, okay? And I told, and Ms. Taylor told me she is gonna do her job, and I told her I'd do mine. That's the nice ways I know to put it. So I started Friday afternoon and I ain't stopped yet. And if I probably wouldn't have told that and started telling people, y'all would've never knowned, and it would've come up with a vote and her would've went, I did not.
Who's, who's making these, these suggestions, Dan?
Turn around, turn around, sir.
Right here is my suggestion and my ordinance. Do you want me to come on up and just ask it, since everybody's? I think so.
Because I, I, because I don't, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not the smartest person around here, I just don't understand what's going on.
Yeah, let's get this over with. People got things to do, men have things to do.
Hold on, do we have to close public expression before this? Sorry. End the agenda.
Does anybody else would like to speak before Tammy can speak?
No, I'd like to say so.
I'll say we got mine.
Hold on just a second, I'm not a farmer and I'm not a logger. But I do own equipment.
Sorry.
I do electrical, oh, Chad Davis, Nicholsville.
Sorry.
Sorry, I know a few of them. Everything, we're gonna not tax logging equipment and this and that, now I've got to pay taxes on my trucks, I do electrical, power lines, I cut trees on the side trying to scratch. So I gotta pay taxes on my trucks and my trailers already, I'm not here for that, but my skid steer, hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment, it don't, it don't get on your roads, I got it on the trailer, I pull it around. But if, I don't know, and she may answer it in a minute, and I hope she does, maybe I can just walk out and we don't have to have another talk. But if they do, I heard something like ten percent, even one percent, if I'm hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment with my attachments, I have to pay a payment already what's none of a thousand dollars. I'm just with the farmers and everybody else, how am I gonna have to pay that? Well, I'm gonna have to work somewhere, I got three boys, and I'm already out of town enough trying to make it. So I'm gonna have to work even more and be away from my family even more just to make payments. I know a lot of these loggers the same way, but I, hopefully she comes up here, but I'm not a logger and I'm not a farmer, I'm a citizen of the county, and I need to know too, not just, if you're gonna exempt it, exempt it for a stop. Lawn mowers, I've heard lawn mowers, I heard that, I don't know, I've heard a lot. Hopefully she'll answer. Hopefully, hopefully she'll answer it in a minute, but I just want you to know, we're not just lawyers and farmers, we're citizens, not just them. We need to exempt. If you're gonna exempt it, hit a stop.
If we could close.
Mr. Ron Jenkins from the Logging Association, he's gonna speak there a minute ago.
There's a man who has.
Did you, did you gonna speak again?
I can speak as a citizen, but I've spoken behalf of the Virginia Lawyers Association, but I don't want to go in wrong with any of these people, better than me a hundred times, I tell them the story, and I think we're telling the same story.
Come on up if you would.
My name is James Kern, I live in Macon. And I guess that'll carry ignorance, I didn't know about this till somebody called me and told me, that this makes a split in place. But I've got a question, I, I need to know something, and I'm sure there's enough intelligence on this committee can help me. Now, personal property, is that part of the Virginia tax code, or where does this come from? Is it you, do y'all do this, y'all set the taxes in the county, right? Just for personal property? So that means we're already paying that, right? And what you're all gonna do today is to exempt certain facts from that. So that means we're already paying the personal property. I mean, I've not received anything personal property wise, is that true? We all get personal property tickets, right, on our tax?
I think, I think what Ms. Taylor has told me in the past has been that the office has had a standing exemption, but nothing in rotten, so that if we get the wrong Commissioner of Revenue in there, they could send you a bail for it. But we're putting the exemption in the rotten today, so that we can say that these items are to be exempt. Yes, sir.
For logging, farming, and trucking?
If the, if Tammy was not in her role, if she, if there was a different commissioner in, coming up, they could actually put your, stunt your campers, whatever's on that.
So this, this exemption is already?
Let's say two years from now, Tammy could do it too, but.
Not if we don't, if we pass it, so.
I'm talking about if we don't pass no ordinance, we do nothing, the way it is right now, the way you're talking, nobody else can do it.
Yes.
But let's just say two years from now, Tammy has a tank of oil, nothing gets.
No, not gonna have a tank of oil.
Now, we don't know that, two years is a long time. No, no, but she could do it too, right?
Right. So where was the document?
But we're putting the exemption in.
I am.
She's trying to protect.
Required to assess all things. I'm not supposed to be picking and choosing, and I'm not here to throw anybody in the past under the bus, that is not my intention. Because I've been in this office and, and I'm just wanting to say, we are going to be certified, hopefully, and in learning more about it, we will be audited, we will be expected to have done this at the regular personal property rate, and would like to have an ordinance to protect me to not do that.
So me as a small business, I sell weed, law people, you're nothing. All my tools on two sets of beans.
Right.
My equipment I have, you're gonna tax me?
That, that's not personal property, that's business personal property, and your tools and machinery will come on a seven sixty-two, which is totally different than what we're talking about here. All businesses are required, if they are a business, January first, all businesses, this is something that has been overlooked. Many businesses have been overlooked, and I'd have an uproar if I could tell you some of the businesses that have been overlooked, because it's not fair, that some have been doing it alone, some have been here for forty years and never done it, but they are required to do a seven sixty-two.
Okay, so that's, wait, that's where the lawnmower tax is gonna come in. All y'all that see these people pulling a truck, two or three lawnmowers on it, that right?
If their business is following and they're making a profit, then the lawn mowers will be part of.
And on the side of their truck, it needs to be a commercial type, commercial truck.
Do your discussion at the podium, so it gets on camera.
I'm so sorry, I'm sorry.
Can we let Mr. Kerns finish you?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kerns, I'm sorry.
I hate to make him stand for so long.
In other words, what I'm, what I'm asking is, I hate to take it down, but if, if we all get something out of this, there's no use for it. If personal property, what's it constitute now? I mean, Sam, I'm just talking about myself, I'm fixed income, retired, and if my, what constitutes personal property in my property? In other words, that's anything that, that could include a lawnmower or a tractor, could include a farm equipment, I wish, you can, you can, but if, is it, does, because all I get now, I think a personal property now is, of course, my home, I guess you could count that personal property, maybe a bill or two. And I see, what else would it be? Cars, automobiles, all right, I pay that. But far as being exempted, the day you're, you're gonna pass the ordinance, or talking about later, later date, if you're gonna set it to the date where you can pass the ordinance, where you exempt the logging industry.
Yes.
All right?
Farming.
A farm, which I, I think that's a good thing. If I'm due to pay that on, on something else, which I done did before paying on lawnmower, I think everybody's confused about that.
I agree.
I think, from what I understand, they're kind of confused.
If that was, like I guess Ms. Taylor said, if you was using it as a business.
Oh, yeah.
Or you can handle rental property, and Ms. Taylor maybe can correct me here. If you was using the lawnmower, you have a rental piece of property and you was mowing it, the yard into me, I would see it as a two, because you're taking care of it. Would that be correct, or would that be wrong?
No, only you are out here owning yards as a business landscaping in that regard. Not as your personal lawnmower.
I looked at it as both ways as a two.
No.
No, or two's already exempt, right?
Yeah, logging equipment, tubes, and stuff, on their, on their trucks.
This is, this has been on the books forever, I don't, unless Mr. Baker tried it years ago, maybe there was an ordinance, I don't know.
There was no.
There was not a, it's been on the books to where they could be taxed. This will take that tax away. Make sure it doesn't. Thank you.
I have one more question. If y'all vote on it today and say y'all ain't gonna do it, can y'all bring it back up in two years and vote on it again and say you will do it?
No.
Yes.
This can be changed.
You can, but don't.
It's not like that I'm gonna ask for it.
I ain't, I'm just seeing what, what we can do if we're just going.
If you have a new board.
A new board, to do it?
Yes, yes.
Can they do it right now? We leave it alone, don't touch it, like it was last year. Can they do it?
Tammy is ethically obligated to charge for it, if we leave it alone, it don't let you anything.
I am to assess all things. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to talk to you.
It's all right, we'll, we'll, we'll get it all out there.
For, 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 is that why, what can I look on a computer, Google, you know how it is these days? I wanna see that lock, says she is coming. I kinda see it like this, this is something new, but we've had computers and everything now for thirty years. This ain't the first time it could ever get violent. Or, or there a place where I can go that give her the law, or like Ms. Tammy, that you, that give you the law?
I have the code book in my office, if you would like to.
I will, I will come by and get the code, so then I can say, well, she does it, but it's kind of funny, it's all happening now, nobody else is doing it. Because now this is a money hungry county, and they don't let too much slip by.
If I could just say one thing.
But they don't let too much of it get by.
The logging tax came up, Chad Hood was on the board, I don't remember who else, it came up several years ago, and Chad then voted against it, and so it, in other words, it didn't go through. So it has come up before on loggers, I do tell that.
It'll get a little bit.
But I just want to say that, so it has come up.
If we can close public expression now, we'll skip to item number nine, the new business, and spring Tammy. Anyone else want to speak?
I could ask Mr. Wade a question, while he's just speaking. Mr. Wade, are you paying taxes on your tools and on your service trip? Okay, so I've been told by another guy that he was being charged, so I didn't know that, I just wanted to ask that question, thank you.
Okay, we'll close public expression and we'll amend the agenda to where we move to item number nine, A, Commissioner of Revenue, Personal Property Tax.
First of all, I would like to apologize to you, Chris, for my language. It was quoted, and it was word for word, that I do apologize for using foul language. And I usually don't do that, and I'm sorry.
I'm stiff with words, I'm sorry.
I understand. Okay, so my purpose for being here today is for a request of an ordinance to set or exempt the personal property rate specifically pertaining to the pull behind trailers and campers, and we don't probably have a handful, but boats and aircraft, and we don't have any airplanes, but it all kind of comes in the same categories at this time. So I have a current comparison of personal property rates, and these are being charged in the adjoining counties on pull behind trailers and RV campers, just the same as a personal property rate, like we would pay on our vehicles. That's the personal property rate. So we have Lee County at one point nine five, Wallace County at one point six five, Norton City at two point oh five, Russell County at one point nine five, and Washington County at one point seven oh. Without an ordinance, our personal property rate right now is one point six five. I am required to, and, and the reason this has really come up is because I am wanting to bring our office up to par, and we are trying to get certified, and we are taking classes, and we are learning, we are trying to educate ourselves, and we hope to educate others in us learning as well. What's really going on here is, I'm asking for an exemption for the RV campers and the trailers that's pulled behind, and it's at the board's request or at their discretion as to whether or not to even exempt it. Otherwise, my job duties are, I have to assess them, but I am here to ask for it to be exempted. I know my job is not been done in the past, and I cannot speak for why that's not been done in the past, I can only say, this is my job. I was elected to do the job, to be fair to everybody, but without an ordinance, I have to do this. I'm asking for the ordinance to exempt it, and then I am protected, I can pass the audits that we are gonna be required to go through. I can pass the audits that we are going to be required to go through because of our certification. And to speak on the farm, can I speak on the farm? This, this kind of coincides with all of this. Even though farm equipment is going to be machinery and tools and equipment in that category is a different levy rate? In our little meeting the other day, I said, I will not, I will not come get nobody's tractors. I'm not doing it. So I may be short time, short termed, can't pass audit, but I will not come after your farm equipment. That means I'm not doing my job. I'm asking for an ordinance to exempt the farm equipment. Then I will be doing my job because I don't have time to come looking for your farm equipment. Or you don't have time to bring me your Schedule F, which I can get and summons. I don't have time to do that. I don't want to do that. I'm not going to do that. But that, that's a whole different category. And then we get over to the logging equipment, which we talked about in July. And we can back up and put that maybe in the same respect. It kind of is. It's up to the board. I just need the exemptions. There's a, the Schedule C that would be, I could summons, I can. I have the authority to do that. I don't have the authority to not tax you guys or assess you guys without an ordinance. And I'm asking for an ordinance. I'm asking for the ordinance. I have a RV camper in my driveway and a day gone pull behind trailer. It affects me too. I don't want to pay taxes no more than anybody else does.
Are you asking?
But I do want to do my job. That's what I was elected to.
Are you asking for all this to be exempted today or just the pull behind?
Since we all talked about it, let's ask for it all.
Okay.
Are you asking for a complete exemption?
Or a lower rate, or a lower rate. I mean.
Well, that's different.
It's different.
So that's what we, we need to sort out.
Well, I, I have in my request a lower rate or an exemption, but the exemption I prefer.
So you wouldn't tax them at all like they've not been taxed?
I wouldn't even have to assess them.
There will be no new taxes on anything that hasn't already?
It would all be exempt in this regard, in these categories, just these categories, on personal property.
No, we'd still tax what you're already taxing now, the vehicles and, but this would exempt?
It would exempt the RVs, the trailers.
There are, the code sections have like, there's one code section that is for like personal effects, bicycles, pianos, oil paintings. So we would exempt all that.
Well, you can put all that in, but.
But that's what's usually in an ordinance.
Yeah, you can put all that in, but I'm.
And then there's another code section that's the farm equipment and the logging equipment. And then there's another code section that has the boats and.
That's more detailed than what I was asking for, but I.
So if we're exempting all of it, it all needs to be?
Just put it all in there. That's fine with me. Because I'm not coming after anybody's.
I do have a question.
Heat sinks and jewelry and their, things like that.
Well, that's, as of right now.
I would like to put it in.
We don't have that. So that's what we need to have in the ordinance.
Yes, put that in there, please.
Okay.
So I don't have to do that. That's more than I even thought I was bargaining for. I don't want to, but yeah, over and above.
I believe Mr. Skeen had a question.
Yes, sir.
Which items are you taxing now that's on the 762 form that were not taxed last year?
Not taxed last year?
Yes.
We are taxing anything that you report to us on a 762. That's totally different business personal property than what we're talking about here today.
Uh, the one thing that I, if familiar with is I have rental property, nightly rental. I'd never, I'd never received a 762 form before. I am now.
And it's a business because it's.
How could you choose to do seven and not others?
No, we're going, we're all businesses.
So everybody got a 762 this year?
It's the best that we can do. I'm just going to tell you all. We have added 200 at least businesses since I took in. We have, we're in discovery mode. And if I get an upward today, I'm so sorry. That's not my purpose for doing this. I am trying to do my job. We have businesses right in front of our noses. You're going to drive by right here in a little bit when you leave here who have not ever turned in a 762. Business personal property is different than just regular personal property though. So we're talking about like three different things here. 200. We don't have 200 new businesses. We don't. If you were a business the first of January, you are required to report a 762.
There's businesses that are not complying with that. Are you able to go after them or follow up with them?
I am. I am. We, we have, we have scratched and dug and pulled reports. And we are burning hours after our time. We are in here that people don't know that we're in here. We're trying to be fair. It is not fair that you have a business that's been here for 40 years making really good profits and really good money who's never turned in a 762. I will not call no names, but I'm telling you all, you would be amazed. And I just think it's only fair. I, I understand, and like I said, I'm not here to talk about or throw nobody under the bus. I'm here to do my job. And my job is actually harder than I even thought I was signing up for when I run. I knew it would be stumbling blocks, speed bumps. But I'm telling you guys, there's businesses. And it's not fair. It's not fair. It's not fair. It's not fair that I had to put on 200. Am I bragging that I did that? No, I'm not. I am telling you, I am here to do my job, and I want it to be fair for everybody that has a business. I can't always see, but, I mean, there's some right here in front of me. Like, we have that one. We go look on the computer. We don't have that one. We don't. But we're going to get them.
These new businesses that come online, does that show, say how the personal property should go down, son?
Hopefully, I don't know if I can get them all to comply, get them in here to comply this year. I'm going to. I'm going to. I have the right to summons their records. If they don't comply, I'm summoning them to my office. If that don't work, I'm going to subpoena them to court. It'll be a misdemeanor. That's my job. I was elected to do my job.
And you got a.
And when there's a, a discretion, if I'm not getting the records, I can statutory them. How am I going to statutory? I've got to figure out a fair market value. I've got to know what they have. If they would just bring it in, comply, this is what we had first of January, we are good to go.
Well, if you went after the length of taxes in the county?
I'm sorry.
The property taxes and the length of taxes, have you went after them, Tammy?
I don't do the collections, but I think Kevin is on it. I, I can't speak for Kevin, but.
The length of pays or taxes.
I'm the assessor.
He could get a break sometime or nothing, did these other folks just live them for free?
I agree. I agree. And see then the code, current and three previous, I can't go back 40 years. Just like, I can't refund 40 years if you paid and wasn't supposed to.
But when you go after these businesses that's here in Scott County, the word gets out, why would new business want to go in? We got no hotels, listen. We got no hotels. Somebody comes in, wants to put a business in Scott County. Well, y'all go Tennessee and stay the night, or y'all go to Wausau County, or go down here, it doesn't feel like the man. Don't. Y'all don't want that. That's what you say now.
That's what they.
You, you're, you're.
I'm doing my job. I'm trying to treat everybody fair.
But it's got a meeting to be in this summer.
It's not right that you've got.
Right.
The Gibson's over here.
But before you go after them, and the word gets out, hopefully, it'll get out real quick.
You run a list in the paper.
Go to them, it's like, look, this is what we're going to do. We know it.
Well, it's, it's not that I'm going after them, after them like I've got a target or.
But y'all, that's the way people look at it.
That's the way they see it. That's the way they see it. I agree. They do see it. They're like, she's coming, she's coming. But, but I'm going to do my job.
Yeah, and I understand. You got to do it.
In Nickelfield, we've got men that come in, they've got business, or they're going to be required to pay. Because listen, they got way more money than any one of us sitting in here. I guarantee it. They got more equipment and all this.
All businesses. All businesses. Beyond that, they are a tax exempt. They have a 501(c)(1) to be tax exempt.
But the business ain't church. I go to church.
Right. I said business. A business.
It's a business.
A business is taxed, assessed.
The church not working on my equipment.
No, the business is going to be assessed if it's not already.
So we need to look into that. Well, that's a lot of money. I paid a lot of money. I know these farmers, a lot of them have used that. That's a business. They're not worshiping.
Well, I won't talk about a specific business. I refuse to talk about somebody and they're not here to defend themselves. I will not do that. But I will tell you, if it is a business January 1st, they are required.
Good luck. Good luck. Good luck.
Okay. So where do we go from here? Do we need to, just going to lump all these together, correct?
That's up to you all. Whenever you make a decision, we would, uh, you would make a motion and advertise for a couple of years.
We need discussion. We need to discuss this. Board members, do you have any suggestions?
I suggest we lump them all together and advertise.
We have to, we have to come separate though, right?
No. Just one ordinance.
If you're exempted everything, or what you're exempted from your list of the ordinance?
In one ordinance. So it doesn't have to be like machinery and tools, it'd be one.
This is just personal property.
Okay, so what do we, is this not property exempt?
Okay.
Nothing about machinery and tools.
And Daryl needs to make a motion.
The logging equipment is on that one.
Machinery tools.
Damn, you're right.
The logging equipment, they were questioning, they put it all together, and I said, the logging equipment would be machinery and tools. Whereas the RV campers and the pull behind trailers, those kind of things would be personal property, just to get it exempted on the right.
Before we do that, before we go, is there anything else on the 762 form that you think needs to be exempted?
Anything that's on a 762 is required to be reported as of right now, and that is not even why I'm here today, but we're there, so.
I'm saying, are we going to be here again trying to exempt something else?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I mean, I, I hope not.
Okay, Daryl needs to make a motion.
May I ask a question? What, can you guys define what we're, what you guys are talking about?
A 762, is that what your question is?
We're a little fuzzy on the.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I don't, you guys have been talking for two hours and I still don't know anything.
A business personal property, uh, someone that has a business is required to turn in what we call a 762, which you would write down your inventory, your.
But that's not being addressed today, is that correct?
That, well.
So that doesn't matter as of today, correct?
It wasn't on mine.
Being addressed today is what I want to know.
The personal property, RVs and campers.
So it's RVs and campers.
And trailers, pull behind trailers.
That's it.
And the things that would be in that same category.
But no logging today, correct?
But then we will go to logging since we're here and we have talked about it.
I mean, hold on, hold on. Tammy came here today to talk to us specifically about RVs and trailers.
Yes.
However, there are numerous other things that have come up since then that we plan on, or we want to exempt as well, such as the logging and farm.
And that is going to be addressed today?
We are going to make the motion to change the ordinance. We have to advertise that in the paper, and then in the December meeting, we will have the final vote.
And the final vote.
But we will have a definition of what you guys are voting on today. Because we, I don't think anybody understands really what's going on.
We'll have to have our attorney draft the ordinance. Because she's got the different sections in there, so she will pull all of those into one ordinance, or to one, one ordinance. Where it will list out exactly what those are. Those, that'll be advertised two times in the county paper, is that right? And then in December, we will take that ordinance and adopt it.
That will also be on the county website too, correct?
Yes.
The advertisement one.
Yes. The advertisement. So he can read it there. I mean, we're still trying to understand it.
Alright, so we're going to package everything into one ordinance. So that's trailers, or do we have to have two?
So we're doing personal property first. So personal property would be your pull behind trailers and RV campers.
Boats, planes.
Boats, planes, trailers, all trailers, all trailers.
Farm equipment, logging equipment.
Is machinery and tools.
Well, no, that's in the personal property.
Machinery tools, machinery tools.
Machinery tools is a different.
That's a different.
Okay.
It's a different levy rate for me, but that they are in our book as machinery tools. So it is personal property, but machinery tools is a separate.
Will we please have some silence so you can hear what they're saying?
The people who have paid, who have been paid, is that machinery and tools or personal property tax on the logging equipment?
It is. Equipment slash business is how we have it, and it's coming under machinery.
Gentlemen, if you, if you want to talk in the back, would you step outside? The other people can't hear and we can't either.
So is that machinery and tools tax?
On the levy rate. On the levy rate. That machinery and tools actually comes under? Machinery and tools actually comes under personal property as well. It's part of the personal property book.
All in is what the code section has.
Go by what the code says.
Exemptions for personal property.
Because we give you the different levels, so, so if you want to do personal property, I think it'll be covered. Because machinery and tools is another category in our personal property book. So we should be covered.
Logging equipment is what they have cited as being added to the code section a couple of years ago with the farming equipment. So all that would be in the personal property tax exemption ordinance.
Okay.
If that's what you all wanted to do.
I think I'm, I'm, I'll make that motion and we prepare an ordinance for next meeting and have it advertised that goes over in the list of property, personal property tax exemptions for campers, RVs, pull behind trailers, farming equipment, and logging equipment.
Other things.
There's some other things that's in the code. You just go by the code.
Can we just say et cetera?
Yeah.
Just go by the code, you want the code section.
And we will track the language in the code.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. I'll third, I'll fourth, I'll fifth.
Okay. Is added in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're going to take a 10 minute break and then.